All right. Let's call the meeting to order. Can one of you in the office there please do the honor of the flag salute for me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There's right now. Right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Ragnar just didn't want to get in now. So because she's vice chairman, put her in charge.
She's connecting her audio right now. Ragna, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, Zach called the meeting to order and we did the flag salute, so it's next is you.
Do I?
You're running the meeting now. We've already done the flag salute. If you're following the agenda there, we've done the flag salute.
Okay, so can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so we are. This meeting is just for, we are here for the discussion about the for the findings from the holding, the meeting, we closed the meeting. Hang on, now I'm scattered again because I got to the meeting late. What? I can't hear anything from you guys. We had the September 8th Planning Commission meeting, you know, Bo, September 15th, kept the open record period.
We're on old business.
Oh, we're on old business. I don't know where we are here. The ZP 21-031 appeal.
Yes.
UEC transmission line.
Yeah.
Yep. Did everybody have a chance to read the findings? All the commissioners?
Yes, I did.
And so this meeting is for discussion. Any comments? I can't even see anybody.
You want me to read in three minutes or the the findings into the record or they're already part of the record? Can you hear us, Ragnar?
Ragnar, could you hear them? Can you, can anyone hear me?
I can hear you.
This is, planning commissioners, this is Chris Crane. I've been retained by the city to advise the city on these two planning applications. The UEC application for the zoning permit for transmission line as well as the Glenn partition application. In a moment, it might be appropriate to have staff update you on any information that came in during that open record period. And then you can move into deliberation on those two applications, starting first with the UEC transmission line, ZP 21-031, and then moving to the Glenn partition, PAR 5-2021. Oh, I just forgot what I was going to say. So yeah, that, that's and I believe we have a quorum, even do we have a quorum even without Commissioner Tenike?
Yes.
Okay, so my suggestion, if, if I might be so bold, would be to have staff give you a brief report on anything that's come in since the, you last met. Have quest, any questions for staff and then move into your deliberations.
Okay. Since the last meeting, we went into the 777 process, held the hearing open for general comments. For until 15th, we received several communications and testimonies which were in your packet. The next seven days were for the appellant to be able to put together their final arguments and we got those on the 22nd. Those were also part of your packet that was delivered. And then the last part was UEC is the applicant. We received comments from, in the final argument, from UEC's attorney, Tommy Brooks. And the day after, you received the change, the changes in our, in the staff report with the new findings of fact based on the arguments that were made in the previous testimonies or any of those. So now it's, if you have any questions.
Thanks, Barry. That, one other thing I would like to point out is we did receive some information after the record was closed. That information was not included, has not been given to you or presented to you because it came in after the record closed. There's, they're public records, obviously the city will retain them, but they're not part of the record in this, for tonight's decision in any event.
So, real quick question. I might understand that no, no new information pertinent to the decisions needed made tonight have come in?
Correct. Well, no, we did receive it, you know, yeah, the city does continue to receive information. We received a letter today from one of the parties, but again, the record was closed last week. So we did not include that information in your packet. So it's not placed before and won't be considered by you for, in making tonight's decision. Because again, it came in after the record was closed.
And one of those was from applicant Ed Glenn. The other one was from Sarah Mitchell with Kevin DeMonge.
So that's all, that's all we have is staff. If you don't have any questions for us, then ball's in your court.
I think I'll read in what I got from you today, Chris, as to what their options are.
It, okay.
The planning commission has three basic ops and options. One, deny the appeal and affirm the decision to approve the application. In this case, the PC would adopt proposed, the proposed findings. The motion would be based on the testimony and evidence in the record and move to adopt the findings dated October 1st, 2021. Affirm the decision to approve the application and deny the appeal. The second option, deny the appeal or affirm the decision to approve the application, but with different facts. In this case, the PC will, the planning commissioner will need to tell you what they want changed, then continue the hearing for two weeks. So you can prepare updated findings that we need. Alternatively, if the changes are minimal, they can amend the findings on the record tonight. Then adopt the findings as amended. This requires two motions. The first motion, I move to amend the facts dated October 1, 2021, and to delete or insert whatever. And the second motion would be, based on the testimony and evidence in the record, I move to adopt the findings dated October 1st, 2021. As amended, affirm the decision and approve the application and deny the appeal. And the third option is uphold the appeal and deny the application. In this case, the planning commission needs to what findings it believes are appropriate and then continue the hearing for two weeks and you can, so I can prepare, prepare them. That, that motion is based upon, based upon the evidence and testimony in the record. I move to uphold the appeal and deny the application because the applicant has not demonstrated that Boardman Code Section is whatever code section is chosen is met. Assuming the motion passes, the acting chair would then declare staff is directed to prepare the necessary findings and return in two weeks so that permission can review them and adopt the final decision. Any question?
No, sir, not for me. Thank you. Ragnar, do you have audio yet? Yeah, it looks like she's not in the participants at the moment. Do we still have a quorum without Ragnar?
Yes. We've got Sam, Jennifer, Carla, Ethan and you. So that's five.
Okay, yeah, that's a quorum. Okay, unless anyone has any objections, I'm just going to move forward in Ragnar's stead and ad hoc through the meeting, I suppose.
And Commissioner, and I apologize, I'm going to butcher your last name, Barres or Barisi?
Farisi, yes.
Farisi, got it a second time. I just want to make sure the record is clear that the planning commission is this, this portion of tonight's hearing is the continuation of the planning commission's consideration of zoning permit 21-031, the UEC, for the UEC transmission line. I, I think it's important to make sure that the record is clear which of the two applications the planning commission is discussing.
Yes, yes, the current discussion is on the ZP 21-031 appeal for the UEC transmission line.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's all staff has.
Okay, so let's move to deliberation. Do any other commissioners have any anything they would like to discuss on it? Thoughts for the deliberation phase?
Hi, John, thank you.
No, I'm fine, Zach.
Okay. All right, so for myself, I did have a chance to read the documents and the, the findings of fact and the communications from both parties of the appeal during the 777 that we had. All of my research pointed to the findings of fact being in line with code. I didn't see anything barring against the code or in question regarding it. Did anyone else find anything other than that? Didn't find any issues where it went against the code?
I didn't, Zach, thank you.
Okay, so. All right, well, hearing, no other deliberation. We would entertain a motion to either, in any of the three conditions previously listed from counsel, he's to approve and the motion and deny the appeal outright. Approve the, the transmission line and deny the appeal with any changes or to approve the appeal and deny the motion outright stating any reasons as to why.
Zach, I'll make a motion.
So to confirm, Sam, you're, you're making a motion to
I'll make a motion to deny the appeal.
To deny the appeal and to approve the emotion without amendments or changes?
So I motioned based on testimony and evidence in the record, I moved to adopt the findings dated October 1st, 2021, and affirm the decision to approve the application and deny the appeal.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to for approval with, to deny the appeal with no objections.
Is there a second?
There's, yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call and count for vote on this, please?
Sam?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Carla?
Aye.
And Zach?
Aye. All right, motion carries. Appeal is denied on unanimous votes. And, all right. Moving on to the next item of business would be regarding PAR 5-2021, the appeal for the Glenn partition. Do we have any outstanding information that has not been presented to the planning commission at this time, other than what's in the record?
No, no, sir.
No.
That's what we, that we gave that I put out for you in the package.
Okay, so I also had time to review this. And so let's open the deliberation phase between commissioners. Did anyone have a chance to read the information? And do you have any thoughts as to, is it in line with code? Anything other than what has been stated in record so far in the findings of fact?
I had a chance to read it, Zach, and I have no questions and no concerns that it's going against code. Thank you.
I also reviewed and cross-referenced the listed codes with the EDC online and I found no conbooks.
Okay. Again, I'll chime in myself as well. I didn't see anything regarding zoning permit that was inconsistent with the findings of fact and outside the scope of the, the current coding as is written. So without any other deliberation being heard, could we entertain a motion to approve the zoning permits and deny the appeal or approve the zoning permit, deny the appeal with amendments? Or to deny the zoning permit and uphold the appeal with details as to why?
I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal and approve the petition.
But we have a motion on the floor to permit the zoning permit and deny the appeal with the findings of fact without amendments. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second. This is Sam.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Can we get a roll call and have commissioners vote, please?
Sam?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Carla?
Aye.
And Zach?
Aye. Okay, so that's a unanimous vote to approve the zoning permit and deny the appeal. Okay, so that does with old business, new business. Looks like we have a public hearing.
You want me to go through the public hearing stuff for you, Zach?
Yeah, that would be great. I'm scrolling through all this documentation on my phone. It's, it's a bit much for a small screen.
Commence the hearing, announce the purpose of the hearing, and it is for a variance for 129 Southwest Eagle Drive, not meeting setbacks. And the call for extensions. If any commissioner feel happy. And objections to jurisdiction. It's in the city limits in various states. So it's in ours and that'll take you staff report. I'll just read through that. 2021, the city received an application for a variance of the front yard setback for 129 Southwest Eagle Drive. The need for a variance was noted as, as for the driveway would be, when it was being installed. It was noted that the garage was within the 20 foot by two foot six inches and the house and would be would be approaching the end of the 15 foot setback by 2.2, 2.24 inches. Both measurements are greater than the 10% allowance for a Class A decision, thus requiring a Class C variance, which is a type 3 decision. And that's why we're at the planning commission level. The house was more than 85% completed when this issue was discovered and the need to, for the variance was initiated. Attached with this report and was in your packet. What is the zoning permits submitted and which was signed by the community development director also attaches the variance application and redrawn site plan of what was under construction. The community development director and building official would establish additional attention to setbacks and are putting two sets of eyes on line, lines that have been strung from the property corners. We have since found two other homes, all of which are on the cul-de-sacs or knuckle turns, which involves a radius measurement. And we pointed it out to the, how to use the monuments to determine the setbacks on these lots. And the contractor is doing better job of hitting those appropriate marks. The reason this house was moved forward from the original approved site is the buyer wanted a bigger backyard. The house was moved closer to the street, a few feet, and it was too much creating this situation. Aesthetically, the house does fit nicely within neighboring homes. And the findings of fact, the house encroaches into the front yard setback 2.4 feet and garage encroaches into the front, front yard setback two foot six inches. The house is 85% completion or greater. The house is on a radius across the entire front yard. And the city has taken the step between the community development director and the building official to coordinate showing the contractor how to measure using monuments to make the front yard setbacks to prevent these mishaps. And staff recommendation, although this mistake should have been caught at an earlier point, it was not. To pun, to punish the contractor by starting over would seem some egregious for a home this far along. Staff recommends approval of LU 21004 and staff double check the setback or not.
Perfect. Thank you, Barry. Okay, so next would be the proponent's case. Do we have anyone for the proponent here to speak tonight?
No, nothing I see on the, on the screen. And no opponents either.
No opponents, okay. So then no cross-examination?
We didn't hear anything from public agencies either.
Okay. And that means no rebuttal evidence with no proponents? So at this time, I would like to close the public hearing and begin deliberation by the commissioners.
I don't have any questions or concerns. Thank you.
All right, it just sounds to me that there was a mistake and staff have rectified that and made a plan to prevent it from happening in the future. And I'm good with that.
Yeah, I would agree. It's, it's a small amount of measurement. Aesthetically, it most likely won't be noticed. It is, you know, too far against the code as far as the measurement, but with measures being taken, put into place to prevent that in the future. I just chalk it up to a whoopsie daisy. And I'm, I'm good with moving forward.
Yeah, I'm good with moving forward as well on that one.
Any other thoughts from the commissioners? Okay, I would entertain a motion, if someone would be so bold, to either approve LU 21-004 or deny it.
I would like to make a motion to approve LU 21-004.
We have a motion on the floor to approve LU 21-004. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second call for vote. Can we please roll call this to get it accurate?
Sam?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Carla?
Aye.
And Zach?
Aye. Okay, that was a unanimous decision to approve LU 21-004.
And I don't know, did any of you look at the pictures?
Okay. It was kind of in that, that corner.
And with that, I don't have anything else, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So was that, I'm sorry, just to confirm, did we have no correspondence information for? So was that, I'm sorry, just to confirm, did we have no correspondence information for commission review?
There's a special meeting.
Yeah, until 20.
Righto. Okay. Alright, I guess I will adjourn the meeting this time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.